All rise, hear ye, hear ye. The Hammond County Commission meeting is now in session. The Honorable Howard Shipley presiding. Harvey.[14.21][14.21](Laughter). We were just talking about this. Chris Kutschoff presiding. Please remain standing.
Thank you, Harvey. Thank you, Harvey. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled monthly meeting of the Hammond County Legislative Body to order. And to do so, I'd like to call Commissioner Huntsman to lead us in prayer. But before you do, Joe, would you please remember the family, the Clausen family, and losing their dad? John passed away. That's Jim Clausen and Jim, John and Jim's father. And also to remember Wayne, as he's still not back with us. And if you would, Joe, lead us in prayer.
Father, we pray that you come to you, that you be with us. Grant us peace, grant us solality, grant us the common sense to do what's right for the citizens of Hammond County. Forgive us when we found short, we hope this will be better here. Amen. To that, we pray yesterday. That will be that.
Father, we pray that you thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, and hope we're celebrating in time. Chris, thank you very much for you, um, your son, Kevin, and you say it's our chance and be with you. And we ask you to be with our county commissioners, anything you need to do, say that you be with us in what we said and what we did. Be with the faithful people and be with them, and we do. We mean very good, Father. We mean that, and we mean everything you do. We thank you, we admit it, we see you.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Huntsman.
See you, ma'am.
Commissioner Walker, would you please lead us in your pleasurable allegiance?
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I failed to make one mention. Mr. Horner's not with us tonight. He has lost his sister-in-law this week, and I'm certain he may be traveling back from that today. So I failed to get that mention. Y'all forgive me. We have 12 present, and we are ready for business. We'll move straight to item two on our agenda for public comments regarding business of the agenda only. Is there anyone that would like to address our commission? You have three minutes to do so.
Glad to know you, Joe Stevens Road. First of all, I'd like to thank Chairman Kutschoff for most enlightening and entertaining conversation yesterday outside the mayor's office. Today, I want to speak about the invoice from Knoxville attorney Arthur Knight that was laid on your desks right before the December 5th committee meetings. What you didn't know on December 5th is that the invoice you were given had been emailed to Mayor Britton at 12:10 p.m. that afternoon, and that the mayor had already sent it to the finance director at 12:50 p.m. with the message, "Approve to pay." Yes, it was approved to pay four hours before you laid eyes on it, and it was paid less than four days after Mayor Britton showed it to you. What you didn't know on December 5th also is that Mayor Britton had hired attorney Knight via email on July 29th, 2022. So the question before you today is, did the mayor have authority to hire attorney Knight and incur these charges without bringing it to commission for a vote? You'll remember, you were either a commissioner, or you may have been in the audience, on August 18th, the mayor brought a recommendation and a proposed contract with Knoxville attorney, excuse me, attorney Adrian Anderson to you for a vote by commission. The mayor did not just send her an email and ask her to represent the county. Unless the mayor can cite good authority for him to go out and hire attorneys on his own, you should reject attorney Knight's invoice, have Knight refund the taxpayer money that Mayor Britton used to pay him, and then let Mayor Britton pay attorney Knight out of his own funds, similar to what happened when Chairman Shipley filed his infamous camera lawsuit and had to refund the money to the county because the lawsuit had not been authorized by a vote of commission. What I was and am most concerned about is that yesterday Chairman Kutschoff said that he assumed the mayor had authority to hire an attorney without a vote of commission, and that he would not ask any question about this because this was not something that concerned him. I hope there are commissioners today who are concerned about whether the mayor has exceeded his authority and incurred unauthorized charges to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission? Seeing none, we have no nominations and appointments. We'll go to calendar order number four, Calendar and Rules Committee, Chairman Doty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, let's start with item 4A, approval of the consent calendar items, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion?
Chairman Doty.
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, you addressed me at this time.
I apologize, sir.
Yes, ma'am. That's fine.
Chairman Kutschoff.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to see Mr. Knight's bill pulled for discussion from the consent calendar due to the fact that we simply did not have the available information, and I did not get a hold of it till yesterday, the majority of it.
All right, so here's the order of business, folks. Follow along. If you'll go to your consent calendar, it's number eight in the order, Taylor and Knight Legal Invoice. We shall remove that item from our consent calendar, and we shall immediately put that in item number five on our regular calendar, items removed from consent calendar. All minds clear with that one? Chairman Doty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With motion second.
We have a motion second. Is there any more discussion on consent calendar minus the Taylor and Knight invoice? Seeing none, let's vote this motion. The motion passes.
Item 4B will be the approval of the regular calendar items. We have two additions, and please, Chair, sir, we need to take these up one item at a time.
Yes, sir, let's do so.
Yes, sir. That being, you should have it printed out at your, at each station. Item 8F is the 2022 Hammond County road list, and I put that in form of a motion to add that to the regular calendar items. I think this has to be off the board, won't it?
Yes, it will.
So do we have a second?
Make a motion.
Okay. We have a motion. Mr. Richardson, Commissioner Richardson.
Say it.
And Commissioner Long has seconded that motion. Any discussion? Let's vote that motion. Call the roll, please.
Debbie Ahern.
Yes.
Chris Kutschoff.
Aye.
Thomas Doty.
Yes.
Anna Green.
Yes.
Dan Harville.
Yes.
Bobby Horn.
Aye.
Joe Huntsman.
Yes.
Brittany Howe.
Yes.
Rodney Long.
Yes.
Mike Reed.
Yes.
Mike Richardson.
Yes.
Kyle Walker.
Yes.
12 yeas, 0 nays.
And the motion passes. Chairman Doty.
Thank you, sir. Item 4B with the addition 8G, Resolution 22-30-A, which is a resolution authorizing Hammond County to apply for the violent crime intervention funds grant in the amount of $179,732. I have a motion to add that to the consent calendar.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Walker, and Mr. Richardson has seconded. Is there any discussion on this one? Let's vote the motion, please.
Debbie Ahern.
Yes.
Chris Kutschoff.
Aye.
Thomas Doty.
Yes.
Anna Green.
Yes.
Stan Harville.
Yes.
Bobby Horn.
Aye.
Joe Huntsman.
Yes.
Brittany Howe.
Yes.
Rodney Long.
Yes.
Mike Reed.
Yes.
Mike Richardson.
Yes.
Kyle Walker.
Yes.
12 yeas, 0 nays.
And this motion passes.
With that item, with those two items passing, adding them to agenda item 4B, which is the approval of the regular calendar items, I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
All right. I'm sorry, was that Commissioner Horn?
Yes.
Yeah, on the board this time. You got that?
Okay.
There we go.
We got it.
Is there any discussion on the regular calendar items at this point? Let's vote the motion, please.
12 yeas, 0 nays.
The motion passes.
It's all ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you. So now, let's move to regular calendar number five, items removed from consent calendar. We have one item, and that is the Taylor and Knight Legal Invoice, Hammond County and Green versus Capps, the invoice from that. And let's see, do we have a motion that we accept this bill? Or it's a consent calendar. It's a consent item. The item is for information only, but it's for discussion at this point. So Chairman Green.
Quick question, should it not have been under finance, sir? Ben's, it has to do with that?
It's consent, it's a pass-through, it's for information only. This bill has been paid.
Okay. Yes, sir, it has been. Two things.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, when we had the contract for the jail attorney, or the contract, it came to county commission.
Yes.
And if you will, take one and pass around. This is so that you all know that I'm giving you the truth. You don't care, take one and pass.
You're assuming we think you might tell us the lie.
Well, I would rather file a document.
I'm just trying to give.
I'm a tax preparer. I like everything black and white, sir. And then the second one that you have coming around is showing the bill and where that it was okay to pay, but it's also showing how that it was coming into play. Now, my question is, first of all, who gave the authority? And I'm assuming Mayor Britton, by the emails, was the one that gave it. Who gave him the authority? Should not that not have come to county commission, just like the contract for the jail attorney, do you?
Yes, we'll get to the bottom of that, and your question, I hope we can answer it right now. Mayor Britton, could you enlighten us, please?
Good evening, everybody. Regarding retaining of Art Knight to represent the county for the lawsuit between Commissioner Green and the county attorney, when she first filed the lawsuit, it was a personal lawsuit, and we did not, or I chose not to approach the commission to hire anybody to represent the county in the case because it was a personal case between Ms. Green and the county attorney. Now, the complaint was amended, and the county attorney was sued in his role as the county attorney, which brought the county into the case. And I was advised to, that the county might ought to seek legal representation for this case. Now, in Tennessee Code Annotated 56112, it gives the county mayor the authority to employ or retain counsel in cases like this. And so the role of the county commission in this is to set the pay rate. And so that code gave me the authority to do it. And Mr. Knight is, was already representing us in the Placard case, which Commissioner Green is a plaintiff in that case against the county. And so Mr. Knight is very familiar with all the parties in the cases, and his expertise is representing county governments and school systems for our, the company that we, that holds our liability insurance. And so that's why we had a relationship, and that's why it took only an email to retain Mr. Knight, because we have a professional relationship, and I'm very confident in his ability to represent the county. But as far as authority, it's in state law, that the county mayor has the authority to do that. So I hired the lawyer.
Question. Who is Mr. Knight representing exactly?
Hammond County.
So Hammond County, I'm assuming, then is joining the lawsuit to collect back what Chris Capps took?
We're.
Where he double-bailed?
We are representing Hammond County. We'll let you take care of all that.
That's not a direct answer, sir.
All right, ask me the question again.
Is Mr. Capps going in to, Mr. Capps, I apologize, sir. I got my name wrong. Is Hammond County going in to recoup the overcharges that Christopher Capps took from the county for attending the committee meeting?
First of all, Ms. Green, you are making accusations. There's no fact presented.
I would agree.
Do they agree?
We can't accuse, this is in litigation. So let's keep our comments toward the invoice of Mr. Knight, please.
Okay, well, the next question for the invoice, did you advise the county commission that you had been advised to do that? Because I don't remember that coming up.
I don't remember. I may have, I may not have.
There's nothing in the minutes to validate that, sir. So should the county?
Not everything said in my comments up here are in the minutes.
Okay, should the county have been advised?
I'm sure I told some, like the chairman, or the previous chairman, or I've told some of the commissioners.
But all the commissioners you don't think were told?
They were advised when I presented the bill that your lawsuit is costing county taxpayers money. I wanted the county commission to know about that, and I want the public to know that.
Well, in my defense.
So that you are costing, even though you say that you're not suing the county, you are costing the county money because of your lawsuit, which I tried to avoid until you brought the county, or your attorney brought the county into this lawsuit.
Sir, I filed that, that was sued in 2018 when I was a citizen of Hammond County, trying to get, shoot for transparency and doing the right thing, sir.
Well, you're costing, you're costing the county money.
Well, you're entitled to your opinion. I'm trying to recoup what's owed to Hammond County citizens.
Let's bring this into order, please.
Yes, sir.
Is there another item that you'd like to address?
Other than, no. Other than the legal services and why, I disagree. I would like to check that code. I would like to put this on hold till the next meeting to give us the opportunity to check the code.
You have a vote, you will have your vote in this, and we will vote this motion, or vote. I tell you what, what we've got here is a discussion, but due to what the mayor has just enlightened us, he had the authority by Tennessee Code Annotated, I can't call the letters, it was five.
612.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you, ma'am. 612, and we'll take that. However, the county commission is now, I'd like someone to step forward here, and let's see if we can move this out.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we not only approve these charges for Mr. Knight, but that we continue to give the mayor our vote of confidence in his expertise and his authority to continue with such, with Mr. Knight and/or other litigators that he finds necessary, and that we also grandfather these charges in and pay these off as they were submitted.
Okay, let's get that one in order here. Commissioner Doty has made a motion that we accept these charges that the mayor, and give him authority to do this negotiation. We grandfather his previous contract at Art Knight's, I think it was $200 an hour that's being charged. We have that motion. Mr. Doty, is that somewhat?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second to that motion? Mr. Huntsman has seconded that motion. I think it's in order. Yes, ma'am, we do have discussion.
I guess I would like to understand how this is different from the one with the jail, you know, getting, hiring the attorney with the jail. Is there a certain amount of money that we don't? I just want to understand from Mr. Britton that how these differ legally?
Basically, it's how a management decision, in that with the construction attorney, that was a suggestion that the county attorney and I came to you together, thinking with the issues at hand, that we needed the legal authority, and then we went searching for someone with that expertise and brought that too. In this case, this was, I was on my own, because I did not have the services of the county attorney, because the suit was against him. So I had a relationship with Mr. Knight, being attorney for us and defending us in different cases, so I approached him.
Well, I guess, but a follow-up, I understand that, and thank you for that explanation, but suppose this isn't the end? I mean, you know, I mean, are we, is this $900, is it all done right now?
Maybe.
Okay, so there is the, you know, I understand the jail because that's, but, you know, this may come up again.
I mean, the case, the case is.
No, 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 the attorney's fee that.
It will be. I mean, it will. As long as the case, as long as the case is active, yes. I mean, we're, there's a possibility and a probability that we'll have future bills, yes.
I think that is concerning, but, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Doty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My issue with this, and it's my way of thinking, is that when we were looking at an attorney to assist us with the jail project, because we were getting hit with these overages every month or two, constantly, and this was a way for us to look into that contract and seek a way to slow this down, because we were hemorrhaging money on that. With this instance, with the amended litigation that brought up every, every meeting now, twice a month, we hear about it, which, in my opinion, should not be discussed in this room. It should be litigated in the court of law where it's filed. But every time that it comes up, you know, constant, but now we've been brought into it because of that. So we are now being sued. To me, that is a step out in front of it, and I'm proud the mayor did it, and that's why I made that motion, because you have to step out in front of any type of civil litigation, such as that where you are sued. And when you bring a party into it, they have to defend themselves, and that's why I made the motion that I made.
Thank you, Chairman Doty. This is not public comment, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Well, may I speak?
Commissioner Walker, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Ms. Green is next.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Green, I misunderstood my.
That's fine. Thank you, sir. Point taken. There was services billed for that that have never been filed with the court, sir. That was one of my points. I believe in getting what you pay for, and if you'll note on that bill, there was supposed to be a letter for court, it's not on file. There was supposed to be some other stuff on there that were filed with the court to represent. There is nothing there. So what are we paying for?
That was amended.
Is that your words?
I'd like to know, yeah, when that has come into play as far as the amendment. It was amended in 2020, so why is this coming up now? I wasn't here in 2020, sir. I was a citizen within my rights of the law. But we're paying for something that this man did not do, and we checked with the courts today. There's nothing there. There was nothing there. That's the reason I didn't challenge that bill December the 5th. I wanted to make sure I had my ducks in the row and check with the court. There is nothing there. So we are paying an excessive amount of money for nothing.
We, okay. We can follow up on this. However, the bill has been paid. We can follow up on your question.
Well, should it have been paid before it come before county commission?
Um, that's.
That's the next question. The legality of it.
I mean, that's how we've operated. The mayor had that authority to move forward on this.
And the past, he had that authority, sir?
But he was able to retain counsel, Ms. Green. And yes, he's paid for services rendered, and that's all I can, you know, I don't know the depth of what you do, obviously, you and your attorney, Doug, and found some other information possibly, so we'll move forward on some of your ideas, okay? We'll try to get some more answers. Commissioner Walker. Rodney, my goodness, mine says Kyle Walker.
Speaking.
Ah, speaking. Commissioner Long.
I think we need to step back here to, Ms. Green brought a lawsuit against Mr. Capps, which in turn was amended, which brought the county into it. The mayor felt like we need rest of the page. First of all, I think when Ms. Green and her attorney were sitting in the room, and Mr. Capps, it's inappropriate for us to even be discussing it. It's not ethical, and especially for Ms. Green, since she has the case against the county attorney, for her to be discussing it is just inappropriate. And I would think that anytime we discuss this case, Mr. Capps included, because he is in the case, that they not be in the room, because we're open ourselves up here, because you have the opposing attorney sitting in there. And I just think it's inappropriate. I mean, you talk to anybody about that. And Ms. Green says she done it on behalf of the citizens, I'd like to see the citizens that signed up for that. If she brought a lawsuit against us for the citizens, you know, I definitely wasn't part of it. So, you know, if we're going to be transparent here, and I believe in the last meeting, she wanted transparency, then I know she asked questions about this, but I think it's unethical for us to even be discussing it. I'm just going to put that to air the way I feel about it, and I hear, hear.
Commissioner Long, I've made a note here to, we'll try to get backstory on legal opinion of this ethics in our meeting, try to get some kind of form, and Commissioner Green also about maybe detailed billing that you're asking for. We'll see what we can do with that.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Walker.
Okay, Bill, I got one question. When you said you hired the attorney, which you have the authority to do, the pay rate was based on what we have paid him in the past. Is that how I understand it?
That's correct.
So that's why you didn't come to the commissioners about a pay rate?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, well, that was the discussion. We have a motion and a second on the floor from Commissioner Doty. Who was the second?
Huntsman.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Huntsman.
Commissioner Huntsman, all right.
Can you restate the motion?
Yeah, let's go over that. Thomas, you here to go with that?
Yes, sir. The motion I made was to approve the billing that was provided to us at the December 5th, to also extend the vote of confidence towards the county mayor as to his hiring of Mr. Knight on this, in this matter, and to grandfather in all charges that will be incurred by this, or to extend and cover those charges. We have to. We have to, we have to do something because we have to pay attorneys or they won't represent us. They're not going to do it for free.
We have a motion, we have a second.
That can be amended if someone would like to amend it.
We ready to vote?
Ms. Howes, a question, speak.
I'm sorry, Ms. Howes, yes.
Well, I'm not for the on and on and on business, but the first two parts, the 900, okay, that's done, and the vote of confidence, that's done. I would like to see the bill stop there and, and gee, we, we sort of need to resolve this and, and get on with life and these things are, I don't know how the courts, you think I would, but as soon as I was an attorney, but they're certainly dragging on and, anyway. So there's my piece, thank you.
Commissioner Ahearn?
Just to clarify with Commissioner Howe, and agree, not to disagree, but just to add to the way I understand, and please correct me if I'm wrong, when you're in a lawsuit, there are different charges at different times. Since this is an ongoing lawsuit, this is one charge, the initial charges. Then you're going to have court charges, you're going to have other charges. I'm not a lawyer, so I hope I'm not saying things wrong, but that's why I believe Commissioner Doty said ongoing, because it is ongoing. This is not the last bill. When this is over with, then we won't pay anymore. But as long as this is going on, there are going to be more bills. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just got one quick question for Mayor Britton on this matter. If there's more bills coming in from Mr. Knight, even though we give you the authorization, they will be on our consent calendar and/or the regular calendar, will they not?
Yes.
They will be there for us to see and-
And, and just for everyone, especially the new commissioners, the reason like the county attorney's bills on the consent calendar is years ago, the commission wanted to see, and this was before Mr. Capps, commissioners wanted to see the attorney's bill. And so they were presented to the commission. So it's not for approval to payment. We owe it. And we, we owe, like on the checks that are approved, once the, the purchase order is written and the invoice is received and the services are rendered, we owe that and legally we owe that. So this is for information. And the same thing with, with Mr. Knight's bill. It's, we owe that and it was for information so that you know what's going on.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, we've got a motion and a second.
Got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I just appreciated, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, all minds clear? Let's vote this motion, please. Off the board, yes. Off the board, motion for this motion by Thomas Doty.
Debbie Ahearn?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Ed DeGruin?
No.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Poyn?
Aye.
Joe Huntsman?
Yes.
Peggy Howell?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Eleven Yang Wonay.
And this motion passes. Thank y'all. We'll go to regular item six now, approval of consent counter. Do I have a motion?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Let's on the board. Let's let them catch up.
There we go.
All right, we've got a motion, we need a second. Second, is there any discussion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Eleven Yang Wonay.
And that motion passes. Item seven, Chairman Horner, he's not here. Let's see, forgive me. One sec. Chairman Richardson, can you handle this one for us, please?
So amended to the professional services agreement of Mosey Architects, and it's a D W O S, Tuesday and back to us for the steel division. But that's in form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second, that we accept the amended bill for our construction. Any discussion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve Y's zero N.
The motion passes. Item eight, finance committee, Chairman Hahn, you are recognized.
Thank you, Chairman Cutshaw. Item eight A, our Muffy Checks for November of 2022. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve Y's zero N.
Motion passes.
Item eight B, resolution 2228, a resolution authorizing Hamlin County to apply for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant addressing food insecurity up to $500,000. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote this motion, please. Um, forgive me?
Chairman Cutshaw, is this the one that we asked the mayor about the fifth for the churches and so forth, and he said we could ask today?
I believe that is correct, yes.
Could we ask him if that's available for the churches and if he knows what the procedure is, please?
Yes.
Contact person as if he thinks he's building history.
Okay. Do we have deadlines that we need to be aware of, or would that be included in it, sir? Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Let's vote this motion, please. Joe, we need you to vote, please. Commissioner Huntsman?
Twelve Y's zero N.
Thank you. This motion passes.
Item eight C, resolution 2229, resolution by Hamlin County, Tennessee to request state legislators to introduce legislation, amending the private acts creating the Hamlin County Road Commission and Road Department. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Eleven Yang Wonay.
The motion passes.
Item eight D, excuse me, recommendation for purchasing voting machines. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve Y's zero N.
And this motion passes.
Item eight E one, Fund 101 Drug Court, $2,025. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote this motion.
Twelve Y's zero N.
The motion passes.
Item eight E two, Fund 101 Sheriff's Department, $410.60. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Twelve Y's zero N.
Motion passes.
Item eight E three, Fund 116, Garbage and Sanitation Department, $175,000. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, $36,309.15. And I put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you. And we have a second with that one for the, just make sure, item E three, $36,309.15. We have a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Twelve Y's zero N.
And this motion passes.
Item eight E four, now we move down to Fund 116, Garbage Sanitation Department, now for $175,000. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Ahearn, you are recognized.
Uh, yes. Mr. Poole, may I ask a question, please? Thank you. Just curious, and, and forgive me for my lack of knowledge, I see the request for $175,000, and that's to carry you from now until the new budget, is that correct?
Correct.
How did you come up with $175,000?
Well, there's several items involved. There's $100,000 to carry us in the maintenance and repair item, that's to fix things. And then there's towing services that we have, we've had more things towed this year than normal, and there's $3,000 in that diesel fuel because the prices have gone up since we've done the budget. And they, we project $70,000 more in that line item to cover our diesel fuel bills. And then the gas lanes, we need about $3,000 to cover the rest of the year for gasoline bills.
If this is not used, will it carry over?
No, it goes back into the fund.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you, appreciate it. Sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Walker?
Okay, when you say it goes back in the fund, does it go back in our general fund or does it stay in your fund?
Goes back in the garbage sanitation.
Garbage and sanitation. Okay, so how low is your fund right now? Is this a dire need that you have to have this money now? Or is this just in expectations that you run out in the near future?
Well, to-
I mean, do you have enough?
Pay the bills that we have on hand right now, it'd take it about $20,000 more to pay the bills through the end of December. And then we've got six months left in the budget year to keep things repaired and maintained.
But what I mean is, do you, you have the money in your budget now to carry, to pay what you currently owe and carry you through January, February, March? Or is this money to get you through January?
Yes, this is, this is money, we, we could, with that insurance money going back into the fund for those two trucks that were involved in accidents, it'll probably pay those bills within $10,000, $15,000. But-
But you'll still have money in your account to operate?
No, not in that line item.
Okay, in that line.
Unless we could get it from another line item and, and move some money around.
So this is just pulling, the public health and welfare, is that part of your budget or is that from another budget in our general fund bill?
That's, that's general fund.
So it's coming out of general funds in his-
His, anything spent on the highway recruitment comes out of the highway fund.
Fund, okay.
Or same thing.
Right, but we're taking this from another fund out of our general account to go into his garbage fund?
No, it, it's within the garbage and sanitation-
Sanitation fund, okay, that's what I was asking, okay. So it's just moving the line item?
Right, it, what you mentioned about, was that the bottom line on the budget amendment where you can talk about the welfare, health, and-
Right.
That's fund balance, that's the respect.
Okay, okay.
Money's coming out of fund balance and not being appropriated.
Okay.
And then if it's not used, it goes back.
Back to, okay, that's what my question was, so you-
I think the fund balance for this garbage is somewhere around 2.7 million or something of that. We have a health reserve premium.
Okay. And it's just being a new commissioner, we have so many different names rather just saying garbage and sanitation. You got so many different versions of that, that's what was confusing, okay? So that was my question. Thank you for answering that.
Commissioner Howe, you are recognized.
Yes, uh, Mr. Poole, thanks for being here. I was talking to Mr., Chairman here about, it sure would be nice to have a visitor to the garage.
Well, you're welcome anytime.
Okay.
Just let me know, I'd like to be there if you come. We'd be glad to walk you through and show you around and, and any, to any depth that you want to come out there and investigate things, you feel welcome.
I'm going to be looking for those diesel mechanics, but anyway, I'll be in there.
We found one. Through some luck, we didn't hire him, but he is a person that will come to your shop and work on your, your trucks and which would, we could avoid towing services and that type thing. We could avoid some costs that we incur to, to get vehicles to the places that they're repaired. He's got every certification that I could think of, and he's been a person that's really gotten educated to the point of, I don't know how much more he could get. And, and so he, he came, worked on a couple of our trucks. He's $120 an hour, but he done a good job. We had one truck that had a wiring issue between the chassis and the, and the garbage truck bed that he couldn't solve, but we sent it up to Worldwide and they were able to figure it out. But those guys that know that stuff, number one, you have to have a propensity to that type of work. I mean, you have to understand engines, you have to like it. It's like a ball player, you just have to like the ball field. This, this guy's that way and he seems available. And while we don't have anybody like that, then we're, he's a welcome sight. Although he's expensive, but still, you should put it in a garage somewhere, it's expensive as well, so. I'm, I'm, that's probably more than you asked for, but anyway.
I'm just tickled we found-
Me too, me too.
Commissioner Hahn, you are recognized.
Mr. Poole, I was just curious, we're seeing a drop in fuel prices, gas and diesel, is that helping any at all? Are we seeing anything?
And, and garbage, we don't use as much gas as diesel, obviously, it's really in balance there, but it is helping. I mean, you know, a nickel here and there helps.
Sure.
If we could get, get, get the diesel to come down, that's what's not dropping much. Good luck with that.
For all of us, thank you. Commissioner Green, you are recognized.
Mr. Poole, question. You mentioned the towing at 3,000. Do you check with both Class C towing companies in Marstown to see which one will do the job the most reasonably priced?
We, we do some shopping around, we use a couple of different ones. We use one more than any of the others because they've been so helpful. And they've given us breaks when we need it, they've answered the call when we're out in snow and stuff, when we've needed it and, and others couldn't get there. So we do use one company more than the other, but we, we use a couple of different ones.
But do you compare the rates?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was curious about. I had looked at the rates to the city, that's the reason I asked, but thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, let's vote this motion. Fund 116, Garbage Sanitation Department, $175,000.
Twelve Y's zero N.
The motion passes. Chairman Hahn?
Item eight five, Fund 131 Highway Department, $109,000.
Item eight five, Fund One-Thirty-one Highway Department, one hundred and nine thousand dollars. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
This motion passes.
Okay, we have a couple off the board here.
Yes, sir.
Item eight F, twenty-twenty-two Hamlin County Road List. Put that in the form of a motion.
This is off the board, folks, so we have a motion. We have a second. Commissioner Richardson, is there any, any discussion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Hey, excuse me, Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Thomas Stoney?
Yes.
Ed DeGree?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Joe Huntsman?
Yes.
Peggy Howell?
Yes.
Robbie Long? Mark Reed?
Yes.
Mark Richardson?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Chairman Hahn?
Item eight G, Resolution Twenty-two, thirty, a resolution authorizing Hamlin County to apply for the Violent Crime Intervention Funds Grant in the amount of one hundred, seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred, thirty-two dollars. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Walker has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Thomas Stoney?
Yes.
Ed DeGree?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Joe Huntsman?
Yes.
Peggy Howell?
Yes.
Robbie Long?
Yes.
Mark Reed?
Yes.
Mark Richardson?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
This motion passes. So that's all we have there.
That's, that's everything, Mr. Chairman.
So regular counter number nine, our Rules Review Committee. Chairman Hahn, you are recognized, sir.
We went over these rules in our committee meetings. Um, I don't, if there, if anyone needs these read again, I'll be more than glad to. But I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Everybody's had them for a couple of weeks now. Does anyone need me to read those? Very good. So item nine is our local rules for consideration. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Eleven yays, one nays.
This motion has passed.
So all that, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir. And now we'll move to, uh, item ten of our agenda, public comments on non-agenda items only. You have three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak, may approach.
I'm going to know each of Stevens' roads. Since I was not allowed to address items that were, shall I put it kind of misleading during your discussion of the Arthur Knight bill? I'll address those now. The mayor says in his seven, twenty-nine, twenty-two email to Arthur Knight that we, the mayor and Arthur Knight, discussed this litigation a few years ago. Yes, they discussed it. In fact, they did more than discuss it in twenty-nineteen. Mayor Britton contacted Arthur Knight and Mr. Knight prepared pleadings, a motion to dismiss. And it said it was prepared as attorney for Chris Capps. Those pleadings were never filed, much like we're sitting right now. Only this time you had to pay for something that has not been filed yet. As a result of filings by Mr. Capps' attorneys, the suit was amended in twenty-twenty to add Mr. Capps, not just in his individual capacity, but in his official capacity. Why two years? For Arthur Knight is called again? Why no discussion with county commission this time until a bill was submitted? It's always when you hear half of a story. I'll be glad to address any questions. I don't mind. But I'll tell you the full story. Not just, oh, we just suddenly got a call from Mr. Capps' attorneys telling us the suit had been amended. It was amended two years before. Amended in twenty-twenty, Mr. Britton sends an email and hires Arthur Knight on his own in July of twenty-twenty-two. Pleadings, charges in August. You get them in December. And then somehow that gets put on the really super fast track for payment. And it's paid four days after you are shown the invoice. Try to get all the facts. Thank you.
Commissioners, I need to address something. I need your forgiveness. I have erred just now in allowing her to continue, but I did because this was for items on, not on the agenda. Everything of her comments was on the agenda. I did not step in. I'm just, this section is for non-agenda items only. That was my error. I allowed it to continue. That was my call. That said, there's always two sides. Anyone else?
I've got one question, Mr. Chairman, if I might, of the county mayor. Mayor Britton, do we have any, um, indications of forward progression on our noise ordinance for the West End?
Thomas, can we hold that, please, sir, and, and do that at the, after our public comment?
Yes, sir.
We'll, we'll get right to that.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Let's continue with public comments.
Eighty-two, twenty, East HJ Highway, Whitesburg. Getting cold, guys. So do we have a warming station set up for our homeless folks yet as of an address or something? Because I've got a lot of people that get out at midnight at the jail and, you know, when it's, you know, really cold outside. I mean, we used to have one where the Silver Angels thing is, but, you know, somebody is there now. So if y'all could kindly give us a heads up at the jail when you come up with an address so we can let folks know, it'd be awesome.
I can help with that. Matt Shelter offers a warming station when the temperature drops below thirty-two degrees.
Okay.
Above thirty-two-
Is it there?
It is.
Okay.
Above thirty-two degrees.
Well, you used to be somewhere else. Okay. All right. Thanks, man.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else that would like to address this commission? Yes, sir.
Jim Step, twenty-six, forty, White Oak Grove Road. I want to read a word out of the Webster's Dictionary. The word is hypocrite. The word says, a person who pretends to be what he or she is or is not. They pretend to have qualities, beliefs, or feelings what they do not really have. Basically, that person is a liar. Now, Chairman?
Yes.
We wouldn't be in the situation that we're in now if it wasn't for what I had said years ago for these previous lawsuits. It's costing the county taxpayers thousands upon thousands of dollars. It's getting ludicrous and ridiculous, and this county keeps tolerating it. I hope come April the fourth of next year, it gets better for the county because another previous lawsuit. Another thing is, someone sent me a interview that Commissioner Green here had. And, uh, in that interview, you said that it's not the media's respons, or the media's responsible for getting out the word to the people. Well, it's, it's not the media's responsibility to say word for word in, for example, a newspaper. You can't do that. That's why I'm glad that in previous commission that we had, that we passed a videotape of these meetings. And it's going from the start of it to the end of it, and it's not been edited. Like some people do. You also said that Hamlin County is not doing well. And that our young people are leaving. I can't, I cannot agree with that. And I'd say a lot of people in your district don't agree with that. When you've got three hundred units being built right down here at Walmart and houses everywhere being built, I cannot imagine that people are leaving when they're filling them up as fast as they build them. So, now the third thing is, you said that some people need to, uh, ask more questions. Okay, I'm gonna ask you a question. This is what Charles Curtis said in a meeting to you all in Granger County. That if you own, for example, a towing service, you are in conflict of interest with Hamlin County. Commissioner Green owns Phoenix Towing, which is on rotation with Hamlin County. She was glad to tell Commissioner Goins that at the time, that he is in conflict of interest, and he shouldn't be doing that. Mr. Goins doesn't, he's not a commissioner no more. He sold that business. But now, but now it's okay for Commissioner Green to have that business. Why is it okay? I'll settle it. Actually, conflict of interest. So here's what I'm gonna say. You took an oath with the state of Tennessee. One of the two things that's gonna have to happen here, either get Commissioner Green off of rotation or I'll ask you to resign your county commission seat.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, for your comments. Thank you.
I'm glad I'm not a co-hack.
Thank you, sir. I've got this, Commissioner Green. Anyone else? Thank you for your comments. Anyone else that would like to address this commission?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, the commission. I'm here again about the noise ordinance. I know-
Your, your name, please, sir.
Dan Pellegrin, seventy-two, ninety-three Briar Drive.
Thank you, sir.
And I just want, you know, this is what, uh, people here in their homes. This is basically a slow torture for like six to eight hours when the red boar, well, I call it the red boar, great smoky form does it. I'm sure it's not the only place that's doing this in the county. We would just, this, this county actually, actually, Marstown Metropolitan area just voted the second, uh, fastest growing city in Tennessee. And I think the fourth in the nation. It's, it's a good place to live. I enjoy living here. But I enjoy living in peace. And I know my neighbors also have issues with it. And I just feel like, you know, just need to do something for, especially to small kids. It's gonna affect them for their whole life and everything from this point on. But I, you know, just really want to keep it at the top of the, the thing, you know. I'm gonna be at every, every meeting until I feel like we get something done.
Yes, sir.
But I appreciate the time and your understanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission during public comments? Okay, folks, uh, seeing none, we will, we will clear our minds.
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
May I answer Commissioner, former Commissioner Stepson?
Well, it, this is our discussion. You do not answer the public in this forum. You can, you, we're, we're here and discussed with us. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
The comment I made about a conflict of interest was Mr. Goins was sitting on the nine-one-one board. I'm not on the nine-one-one board. I'm simply on the rotation list. And if you will ask Mr. Carpenter, and I'm sure he'll tell you, they pick those up through the computer. I have nothing to do with that. And yes, we do tow for the county rotation. But we only tow when they call us. We are not a county vendor. To me, that would be a conflict. So I, I will not bid on that. I will not do that. But the reason I said most kids, most people were moving out of Hamlin County, my children moved out of Hamlin County because they had better jobs in Nashville and in Bristol. So some of my words were taken out of context, and if you have any questions, I'm an open book. I've done things I'm not proud of, but it's there, and I'll admit to it. But, uh, I'll admit to anything I've done, and my life is an open book. I'm not ashamed of anything I've done or anything I've said that I've not repented of what I should have. And at that point, I'm sorry that he, Yuns had to hear that. And unfortunately, I am sorry that he has the attitude he does, but that's, that's still fine. I will say thank God that we have the commissioners we have in that district now.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, could, did we get the mayor, uh, I went down and said, listened to that. Could you give us maybe where we're at on it? Because it was, it was pitiful, sir, I for it.
And you're speaking of the, the noise?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I'm in the process of, of gathering information about what other counties do as far as, as noise ordinances. And then, um, doing the same thing with campers. And, and, um, so I'll, hopefully, my goal is to, to bring guys something in January.
Thank, thank.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other commissioner? My mind's clear? I know. Folks, let's, uh, let's remember a couple of items here. Um, appreciate you guys. We had, um, you know, it's Christmas. It's a special time of year and, uh, grateful for that time of year. And I hope each and every family here can be home and represented in, in their homes and enjoy and have a Merry Christmas. That's what I, my hope and wish. But, uh, just be mindful that we will begin again. Uh, January committee meetings will be January the ninth at five o'clock in this room. Our commi, next commission meeting will be January the nineteenth at five o'clock in this room. We are adjourned.